So that, the initial installations weren't done. They were throwing them in the pit and it literally was a long period of time that went by before we swept the system, found them and started getting them all in lid locks. That's why we're seeing premature failure on the units, on the batteries, so on some of the units. So again, we're warranting that, we're giving them new units. Kenny has them in stock. We're consigning material here so that they don't have to wait when they find one that has bad battery to replace it and they send it back to us. Again, you know, installation problem, not a center problem, but we're going to warranty those products and bring them back in. And we talked about the meters. So that pretty much takes you through everything we discovered on our visit here. Again, I think your system is, sorry about that. Your system is reporting very, very well. That's a compliment to the staff that's keeping that up and running. The information is there. Leslie brought up some things today she would like to see in the system, being able to monitor irrigation better if people are irrigating every day. If we can get an alarm that tells us that and do that. And so I'm going back to talk to my engineers. We normally do it on a high-usage alarm and then you run those reports, but that gives her a lot of work to do, so we're going to see if we can pinpoint it for her with the software. And my engineers love me because I always come back and say, hey, this doesn't seem hard to me, can you get this done? It's never hard to me.
I thought ours did that right now.
You can.
I thought our system did that right now.
No, you can, but you have to look at all the data rather than the computer looking at all the data and then giving you very specifics. So in other words, like we do leak alarms, right? So a leak alarm is simply no zero usage over a 24-hour period typically means that that resident has a leak. That's easy. She gets the leak alarm, she gets that. On the irrigation side, because we don't know your watering days and stuff, basically if you have a high-usage alarm, then the high-usage alarm says, hey, they're using more water than they normally would, which means they're irrigating on these days. That gives her more work to do because she has to look at each one of those high-usage alarms. And what we want to do is now come up with a way of saying, okay, if you're watering, if you're watering two days a week and they use three days, if you see usage over a three-day period on a reuse meter, because that's one thing you have here that other communities don't, they use one meter to do both, right? Then what we'll do is try to come up with an alarm that says, hey, they've watered more than two days. So she doesn't have to look at data, she knows that they've watered more than three days.
If we would input, knowing that most people in Gateway are on a Thursday, Saturday, Friday, Sunday watering schedule, two days, that's all you can do. If you would input the address, asking this, would input the address of whether you were a Thursday, Saturday, or a Friday, Sunday, would the computer come back and indicate who was watering any other, nothing wrongly?
Um, the, let me see, let me...
To me, that would solve the problem.
Yeah, and until you change those days of watering, you know, that's the problem utilities can change.
Well, they're locked here. They've been locked since, God, nobody knows how long.
So, but when we develop our software, we typically develop for, you know, what will work for the vast majority of the utilities out there. So to answer your question is, I have to go back and talk to the engineers about how we do this best for Gateway. And is something we have to develop, or is there something we can do quickly that will give you the information that you're looking for to make Leslie's job easier in spotting the misuse?
Well, our problem is finding, we can't find, but we can charge. What I thought was, if you're watering, you want to water, if you're on a Thursday, Saturday schedule, and you want to water any of the other five days, you can, but the rate's five times higher.
Well, we can, because we track it by hour.
That solves the problem.
Remember, you track it by hour and by day, right? So you get an hour, you get 24-hour reads and a daily read every day.
What's my point, though, Rick, is when the billing goes out, if it were automated such that my house, I've got 30 days in the month, which means roughly I've got, what, two a week, eight days that I would have water, I would have eight days times that gallon each times the going rate.
Right.
I had 10 days watering, the way it was supposed to be. We still go ahead, that's fine, you can do it, but the rate is X times five.
No, no, I understand.
And your bill, that's what I'm looking at, that would stop that immediately.
I think that's a little harder than what, just finding somebody who's watering more than two days a week. Again, Leslie's going to send me an email specifically what she wants and want to talk to the software engineers and see, you know, how difficult is this and what we can get to do.
Our problem is, is that even if we find them, I'm trying to explain that, even if we can find them, there's nothing we can do to.
Oh, really?
We can't find.
I'm curious.
We have no finding authority. So what we can do is to change our rate schedule such that they pay, they pay what in essence is the fine with the excess usage. That solves the problem.
Yeah, most communities, most communities, because you know, there's about 36 states in the country that have water shortages, they have a finding system. I mean, if you go off that wrong day, I mean, it's a fine, it's a couple of bucks.
We can't do that, that's our problem.
Yeah. I would assume that doing a flat rate to X number of gallons and then anything beyond that goes to a graduated scale would probably be your best bet, an easiest way.
We have that right now. We have three tiers. We have the base tier, then we, you go over a certain monthly flat rate, which is what, 20,000 gallons for a single family, I believe?
Twenty-five.
I'm sorry, 25. Then you go to an accelerated pay plan. And if you go over 50, or 75, 50 for residential, then you go to a really accelerated payment plan. But the deal is, that doesn't take care of and has not stopped the one that wants to water every day of the week. The only way you're going to do that is to have it five to 10 times those days that you're watering, that you're not supposed to.
Well, the first thing is to catch them and that's what we're going to set up with Leslie and then you can decide how to manage that.
Well, our problem is, we don't have a way to manage them after the fact. The only way we can do it is with the bill.
Wes, I mean, you can come up with some sort of billing for that.
He's not going to be able to solve our finding.
I can't solve your billing.
What I'm trying to get to is, is that if my reading comes out and shows that I'm watering the eight days I'm supposed to be watering, I'm on the rate schedule that we have. But if I'm watering on the other days, then the bill picks up and it adds that surcharge.
Sure.
That's what I'm trying to get to, and that stops Leslie's issues.
We can only give you the data, we can only give you the data that says they're not watering only on their eight days.
Well, the computers first got, or the billing system has first got to know when the person's...
That's your billing system, that's not us. We only give data.
Right, and the current billing system doesn't have that capability.
Okay, but as I understand it, their equipment does.
Right.
So we need, we're getting to it, we need this, the billing system to be integrated with their capability and we can stop this.
Yeah, but if the billing company can't do tier billing, tier rates, is that what you're saying?
No, they can do tier rates, but they can't say, okay, how am I going to tell the billing system that this person is, be subject to charge because they watered more than two or three days?
Yeah, you'd have to come up with...
The billing system is just not capable of doing that. I could charge us, I can say, okay, I'll have to look into it, but we would say they're violating the irrigation schedule and we charge them a flat rate.
Well, let's go back. Can your system meter or differentiate the water that is metered on days that are allowable versus days that are unallowable if we tell you what those days are? Can you do that? Because if you can't do that, then the metering people aren't going to be able to do a damn thing.
Well, so, we can, so we use data. Basically, we take data into the system and then what you do in your, once it's in the database, it's like when you look for something, you want to, you want to sort it on an Excel spreadsheet, you say, everybody who's watering on Mondays and Thursdays, right? There will be an alarm for those people and that will come up on a report, these people are watering on a Monday and Thursday, which is off their days. You'll know that, we won't. All right, so you can do that. All our, so you can take all our information, you can download that into any Microsoft program. So you can put it in Excel and you can exercise it, sort it, do what you have to, and that's your list. We're going to, like I said, I'm not smart enough, I'm going to stand up here and say right now, I'm not smart enough, I'm going to have to go to my software engineers and say, what is the best way, I understand what you want to get to, now I have to see if it's possible.
Our problem is similar, if we didn't have the prohibition against finding, this wouldn't even be discussed.
Yeah, finds is how everybody does it.
The finds is killing us, so we can't do it. So it has to be, it can only be a different rate schedule. The only way it can be...
Yeah, to me, water is, I do a lot of, speaking at conferences, water is becoming a huge issue across the world. I caution all communities to preserve their water tables and assets and, you know, overwatering is unnecessary, it should be penalized, and should be stopped. I, there ought to be a way to, I promise you, I just invested myself into, you know, Warren Buffett and Tivun Pickens are setting up stock funds, buying up aquifers, and I've invested in one of those. Water is going to be traded on the markets, water pricing is going up, water is becoming a very, very scarce commodity and that's why our business has been so robust globally because this is the only way to manage your assets.
Which a lot of people, the potable water is a real issue. Us here, right now, it's the reuse water.
You know what?
It's killing us.
In Texas, after we went through our five-year drought, we cleaned our sewage water and we put it back in our systems. We had cities that actually ran out of water and we were having to truck it in. Texas is never going to forget those years and have built, you know, you have to preserve your assets. Population growth and economic growth are impossible without preserving your water. That's all, that's what our system...
We don't use wastewater to meet our demand.
Yeah, this is, this is, I'm just saying, treat your water as something precious because it has to last a very long time as the community grows and people should be responsible. Overwatering is just irresponsible, in my book. So, and we're, and I'm on a global basis, working with people, the World Bank and stuff that's helped solid these problems. So we're going to work with Leslie to see if there's something we can do. It won't be overnight unless there's something we already have in the system. If it's something we have to develop, it may be six months or so before we get into the development agenda, so.
And I think you wanted to continue with some of the hardware problems you've found, correct?
Yeah, we did that. The, you're talking about the, we talked about the batteries and stuff, the last page?
Okay.
Yeah, we talked about that, the ETRs, ETR, the dead batteries, yeah, the ETR dead batteries. There is water intrusion getting in, shorting out the fins, which obviously drained the batteries faster, that was happening there. And we've never seen that, by the way. We have multitudes of millions of these deployed around the world and this has been the largest failure rate we've ever seen. I think a lot of it was done from the, from the initial installation, the way they treated the property. So, and the meters, we talked about the meters and our resolution here, if we're going to put some parts here, they can drop some new chambers in there when they get some damage to them. You guys will be able to manage your own process without sending stuff back and forth.
Did you hear?
Yeah, just really quick. So 2016, the number of defects were how many? Do you know off the top of your head, Ken?
Five, 93.
93. And then 2017?
2017 was 593.
593.
2018?
13.
1330.
And then, as far as this year?
80.
Is that 1330 water and reuse combined? I'm sorry?
MIU. Yeah, they're MIU, doesn't distinguish.
Do we know, or can we say that those 1370 that this year, 90% were created by, or were the result of poor installation?
2015 installs.
I'm sorry?
There were 2015 installs, were there? Well, there were pretty much all 2015 installs.
80 from this year?
Well, what I'm trying to get back to is, do we have a, do we have a trend that we're not seeing this after we got this problem resolved? That it's all still the original issue?
Yeah, that's one of the things I always look at, all the ones that we installed versus the original installation.
They're all the early ones, we track the service numbers.
So what percentage of those early ones are the failed ones you're measuring? Now, the 1370 this year, how many of those were the early 2015s?
Except for, I think, two or three of them, they're all were. Now, you got to remember, you're going to get a natural failure rate on electronics and the environment, you're using about one and a half percent a year.
I remember that in the literature.
And that's normal. All right, you're a little bit above that normal rate because of the way they treated them in the beginning, you're getting early battery failure.
Well, if we, if we had two, correct me, two in 2016, 200?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-sixteen?
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three, and in 17?
Five ninety-three.
Five ninety-three.
Six eighty, six eighty in 19, we're up to 2,000, ballpark. How many were done in 2015 that we still have left to go and worry about? Are we about out of them?
No, no, there's a little...
About 4,000.
4,000.
Yeah.
So we have, we could be looking at another 2,000.
Yes, but you don't know, I mean, they weren't, I don't think it's going to be 100% across the board. Trust me, I hope it's not, because I'm eating it. So if these things, you know, I'm repairing and giving you new units for, if I have to, you know, it's painful for us because it's a complete loss.
You said that you've done this and you've got these all over the place. Is anybody else experiencing this, what appears to be an installation issue?
One other customer in the Northwest.
But you felt that it was very possibly a similar installation issue?
What they decided to do is stake them. They tie-wrapped them to a stake rather than put them in the lid. And of course, over time, the tie-rafts grow, they're in the pits and that caused their problem. So, again, you know, the good thing is, then as a responsible company, we're not going to stand there and say, hey, it's not our problem, install it, close it, we're not going to take the loss. We don't do that, we want your system to be 100%. Like I said, we're working with Kenny and Leslie, they're a pleasure to work with.
Anybody in South Florida?
No.
That have these installations that are having issues?
No.
Any other questions for? Okay. You're replacing these now, is this going to extend the warranty on these or just...
No, the original warranty stays. It's like any product you buy, you know, when you get the new product, it has the remaining warranty left on it. But your warranty is 10 full, 10 prorated years, so it's a 20-year.
I just figured.
Yeah, we're on a sliding scale warranty, aren't we?
Not yet, not yet. Your first 10 years is full.
10 and then drop off.
And at that point, you can teach how to change the batteries.
Positive sided.
Positive sided. Even on your, I went home right away after I discovered that, and because I always thought my kids or my wife, you know, they're leaving the flashlights on, I can never find a flashlight that works when I need it, because you don't need them kind of often. And then I end up, I come home and I say, I apologize to everybody, then I built a little wooden rack so I can put them all positive sided up.
After that discussion, too.
Yeah, you know, and that's why if you've ever noticed, toys are always made so the batteries go in sideways, because they last about half the time as they normally do. So it's just really, battery companies, you know, after learning that, I'm one of those guys, I like, I hang on the facts that I learned that surprised me.
So now, when you pick up your flashlights, do they always work?
Absolutely, they do. It's amazing, it just never gone, has it? You know, I think I'm a fairly intelligent guy, never thought about it, just that somebody must have left it on, is what I always came up with.
Any other questions for Rick?
Nope, just one other little fact, which is, for William and Doug, because you guys were talking about, in today's day and age, trying to make sure you hang out with people, just, you know, working with the AWWA, seven out of 10 employees working in the municipal industry across this country are going to retire by 2025. Almost 70% of the people working in this industry are going to retire by 2025. Be aware of that, because it's very difficult to find, I'm just giving you information, it's going to be extremely difficult. And we're faced with that and I warned the AWWA, we ought to be addressing that because it's a huge drain on the knowledge base in this industry, which is faced with a lot of challenges, but we have a lot of challenges in the world.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting me be here today, I appreciate it.
Thank you for coming.
I tried to pull the waters out. Did it work?
No.
Kenny, you're up next, utility.
Good afternoon, Kenny Halli, utility manager. I just wanted to go over a little fast, the Storibook Master Station, we're about 50% done. We've got all of the internal underground piping done. We installed two new isolation valves. We had to do a complete line stop on that station, which was a pretty good deal. We got an isolation in front, isolation on the back, we replaced all of the valves in the station and all of the new plug valves. So what we're waiting on is a concrete pad and then we will start on the fence and driveway section of the Master Lo Station at Storibook. So we're about 50% done. The fairway aisle, sanitary sewer break, I turned in the video to BONES today. They came and picked it up, they're going to work an estimate out for us.
Is this the original video or...
It's the original video that you took, from the top side down.
It doesn't articulate to where you go up into the service path?
No, the only way we're going to be able to video that is to get directly over and then go up with the camera.
Yeah, you have a camera that articulates, that goes up.
And I'm waiting on Sewer Viewer, I'm waiting for Sewer Viewer. I also have Infomark who wanted to come out with their camera and shoot the line, so we're on that. And then I met with South Rail Fire Department today. When we do do that repair on that road, we're going to take out about 14 feet of it. So we have to have enough room to get an emergency vehicle through there, we need a fire truck and an ambulance. We went out and took all measurements today, so South Rail, it looks like since the tree is out, we're going to be about two feet over into the yard when we actually do the cut on the road.
On the south side?
Yes. We're going to have to go up into the road, well, into the yard to get through, especially with a fire engine or an emergency vehicle, something along that, yeah.
Probably remove a mailbox.
Yeah, and if we run into, we also discussed, there's a fire hydrant on the opposite side of the street that might have to come out when we cut the road, because it's directly in front of a resident's house right now, in front of the driveway. And there's a fire hydrant on the side, so if we cut 14 feet, they're going to have about five feet on their driveway. So we might actually have to move it and remove that fire hydrant temporarily while we do the repair.
Kenny, just clarify that, the activity, any cutting out or anything like that is all within either Red Warrior or Eastern District has?
Yes.
All that activity?
Yes.
Thank you.
And then, I'd say we had the Talon Preserve meeting. This one was a lot less animated than the last one. It was a fairly productive meeting. I did about a 20-minute presentation, I believe, it was 20 days, 18 to 20 minutes. It went fairly well. We're following up Lee County again. Next week, we're going to sit down here at the office and go kind of go over everything that we've done. Carol Baraki has gotten money released from the Residents Alliance to go through and start changing out valves. Because as you said, if you remember, last year, the district did two houses and we went in and we changed all six lines of emergency valves in the house, in two houses. And both of the residents' houses that we did have reported, the odor issue just completely went away, gone. And we discussed that kind of at length at that meeting. It went fairly well, I'd say, other than that. But we're, the next meeting is next week and we're going to sit down with Lee County one more time and kind of go over some results. A lot more this time, it was more on the hot water side than it was on the cold water side. There was a lot more hot water complaints whereas on the last meeting was a lot more people and a lot more, I would say...
Animation.
Animation is a good word for it. This one was a lot, you know, this one was nothing like that, but it went fairly well. And Cecil Pendergrass was there, he followed me and Pam Keys and Hank Perez Peruso from Lee County were there as well. And that was, that's all I had.
Any questions for Kenny?
I'll pick up from there. Our renovation work on the soccer complex and the swimming pool are both complete. We're going to do a little painting and freshening up the soccer complex. It'll get underwritten next week or two, but otherwise, everything that was in the contract is finished over there and it's a lot better.
Have you gotten any comments from people that have come back to the pool?
No, I haven't been up there. I know it's, you know, straightened out, the tiles and rusty doors are gone, so it looks a lot better. We saw some work to do up there.
I was up there this weekend, it just opened up today. Still open.
Yeah, sure, we got that open. Matt Tower, I've got the contract back this week from them, signed for the additional work. They're still working from the original contract. Over in Gateway Greens, they had a hiccup about the last eight days because their truck went down instead of being fixed in two days, eight days later it still wasn't, so they went and rented one, but they're back to work now. And I also asked them for a quote for the other $100,000 to continue in Gateway Greens. I'm also sending that to our second-ranked bidder, Shenandoah, to see if they'll throw a price, just because we're getting close to the amount of work they have to do in the rainy season. Lake Bank Restoration 92 is done, 124, they already started putting the trench and the survey work on 124. If you look across the street at the church, that lake is underway, the trench is in and they're starting to put material down. And 61 will be starting tomorrow or early next week.
What about 117?
Yeah, Chris, on 1 and 2, what's the difference between Lake Wetland Stormwater, between 1 and 2? 1 says storm drainage cleaning, the other says storm drainage conveyance cleaning.
The conveyance are the channels like coming out of Stony Brook and those other ones, and that's a different contract that's out to bid.
Flowway.
The conveyance is flowway? That's all I needed, okay.
That's coming in on the 27th.
Yeah, and we have a prebid meeting next week on that and I've gotten a half a dozen calls from contractors, so it's...
Not so many going 175 at all?
Yeah, well, this section is only going to be from Treeline this way.
Oh, it's not all of it?
No.
Okay. Thank you.
And also, there's an update on their FEMA, that's just basically where we are right now. You can see the project's fully obligated, the first five amounts in there, the other ones are penned in and reviewed and we're not sure where they're going to go until they're done with the review. We did get $10,000 approved for Mr. Geppert's aerators and that was basically mitigation money, not damage, it was to pay to put suppressors and to raise those cabinets up. So they were working on it and...
Yeah, it was their idea, not ours.
Yeah, mitigation money was there, so they're going to reimburse that $10,000 for that part of the project.
Need a comment?
Yeah, got a question. The two ponds in Callaway, they aren't on that list, what's the schedule on those?
They're going to be getting, they're going to finish up, Fisher's going to finish up over here and Matt Tower, their 61, then they'll get started directly, so I'd say about four weeks because it won't take long to do those other ponds.
As you know, they're doing, they've mobilized and starting to do the work on 124, but I'm really concerned with that water level. Where do we get with South Florida Water Management District on lowering the basic board to at least allow the work on 124? You can't do that work underwater.
No, Tyler, actually, Tyler and Danny were over having a work meeting with the Water Management District, they're quarterly one, and they posed that same question, actually before I got to Melissa on it, and the response was, you can pump out 5 million gallons a day without a permit.
Where'd that come from?
That was from the regulatory staff.
Where'd that come from? Some permit?
Engineers, it's a notice general or under that amount, you don't need a permit.
Correct, by law. By their rules, as long as it's under 500 or 5 million a day or 100 million per year, you're, it's a general, basically, which means you don't have to file anything.
Okay, I'm sorry, so 3500, that's 3500 gallon head?
Don't ask.
3500 gallon head?
5 million a day.
I know where you're going, I won't ask.
And it has to be onsite discharge.
What do you mean?
Well, I mean, you can't, we couldn't go pour the water over out of Gateway, you know, as long as it's staying in Gateway.
No, no, no. We put a humongous pump right there by Weir Ford.
Right.
And just pump two feet and get it out of there.
And I haven't gotten the response back about lowering the Weir for that purpose, but.
Well, that was, that's my question.
The 5 million gallon a day.
Pump it out.
Pump it out or well.
Weird out.
I don't know how many surface acres there are out there, but 5 billion gallon a day, that.
By pumping it, we're de-watering.
I'm sorry?
By pumping it, we're de-watering.
I understand that, but at the rate of 5 billion gallon a day, on that expanse of surface acreage, it'll go down about like that.
It's semantics.
We need it to go down that much to do the work.
Abby seems confident.
That's why I'm saying is, I don't think they, South Florida understands that the time to do this work is now. And typically, our lakes are down now, and they're not now. Can we lower them now to do the work? That they're telling us we have to do. You can't, you cannot do this kind of work underwater. It ain't gonna work.
They're allowing us to de-water 5 million gallons a day.
So let's let staff do what they need to do in order.
Abby is confident that they can do that with 5 million gallons a day.
Hope Abby's done that calculation.
We have a good meter. It registers 5 million gallons a day.
Then it shuts off.
And I'm just being funny, don't be mysterious.
And we should move on.
That's been answered.
And right now, across the street, they are de-watering that small pond and pushing that water right over to 92.
90 to 92.
Right. Yeah, they are de-watering over there to work. They have a big pump set up. If you go right over there, you could.
At 90?
Yeah.
So they gotta blockage in the 72-inch pipe?
Right.
Okay.
District Engineer.
Oh, it's my turn.
You're up.
For the record, Danny Nelson with Tetra Tech. You have our task authorizations. I do wanna go over a couple of updates even since here. At the last meeting, I mentioned the facilities plan, which was supposed to have gone to on DEP's February public hearing, which then got pushed to May. But we actually got a call from Hank Ash Shaw two days ago, and it hasn't been approved. So he's just waiting on a signature from Tim Banks, who's the administrator, and they'll send that to us, which then allows you to move forward with design and anything you want to do with that facility plan. So that was, that was good news. So I'm not sure what took place that doesn't normally take place, but that was good news.
What do we have to do to get the money for that?
The first thing you'll need to do is a request for inclusion to include whatever you want on the next step. So if you wanna move forward with design, whatever you want to be funded.
Do we need a motion to do that?
It, I think, probably would be safe. I don't know.
I don't know why we wouldn't be wanting to do that.
Yeah, I mean, that would be the next step. So if that's, if that's what the board pleads.
And it's just allowing you to get on that list, and I have that form.
Yeah, because we wanna immediately get on the design phase of the Phase 2 ponds, get that going, at the same time, put in for the funds that we're allowed for the Phase 1, I'm sorry, Phase 2 facility planning, which as I understand, is around 120,000.
I don't know that that, you know, needs to be a motion or just understanding that the.
Basically, make sure we get it.
What I would suggest, because you never know what piece of paper a staff person in the government office may want, I would suggest that the board authorize the chair and or manager to sign whatever is necessary under this request for inclusion, so that including any verification of the chairman's authority or the manager's authority to sign the request for inclusion.
You want that to be a motion?
I guess it'd be a motion, actually, by the board.
I will make that motion.
And a motion would be to authorize the chair or manager to sign and deliver a request for inclusion for additional funding, Dan?
Funding for the design phase.
For the design phase.
Pre-construction.
Stage 2 design phase, yeah, okay.
Let's have it be the manager, because he's the one that's overseeing this, so let's see if that's all right with the motion makers.
That's fine.
Okay.
So we have a motion in the second to authorize Mr. Schumaker to sign the necessary documents. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
One question?
Yeah.
Okay. It's not on the agenda, do we have to go to the public?
You can ask the public for any comment, if you wish. Any members of the public wish to comment on the action?
And then I have a, well, I know we're talking about that. We made two motions earlier, and these were not on the agenda either.
With regards to the salary, I think it was, I think it was on the topic of salary structure.
Okay, so they're, even though it's, okay.
Yeah, I'm convinced it is within the range of the agenda items.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for asking.
A couple of other things to point out. I think I mentioned it previously, surface water modeling, the model has been set up, developed. We're gonna come back with a memo or maybe even a PowerPoint at, I believe, the next meeting or the meeting after that. Our goal is the next meeting. Just to summarize what has been done and where we're at, and our recommendation is to let the model sit there for another three, four, five, six months until we go through this rainy season, because it's difficult to calibrate. Chris did send over some great information on the flyovers that were done following Irma with the drones that helped them, but having actual data is, you know, is even better. So we'll bring that back to you. And the last one on here, the storage facility bidding, just sent it to you guys today, Chris. You probably haven't even seen it, the front-end documents, and I think the advertisement, and to Tony as well, so we can go ahead.
It popped up on my phone, yes.
Yeah, so we can go ahead and get that rolling. So whenever you guys get a chance on that, apologize, I meant to get that to you last week. So outside of that, I think that those are the more recent items on here from when this was actually prepared. So if you have any questions.
I have one, and it is, where are we with the LDO on the first list?
Um, on the one.
Because I didn't see that on your list.
No, I should add that on here. And I apologize, I can't tell you exactly where it is, but I can tell you is that the drawings necessary for it are complete, but I'm not sure if we have actually submitted or not.
You said what, the LDO's what?
The first set of lakes, the ones that we had to do the retro D O work. So I'll have to verify that.
Is that the one that's holding up the country club?
That's, that's.
That's the second.
That's the second one.
Yeah. So I'll verify. I know everything's been done, I just don't know if we've submitted or not. And that's not possible.
Because it'd be really nice to have it.
I agree.
Thank you. It's very hard.
Has either Tetra Tech or the District had the Pelican resident help mission involved in the modeling plan, because he is a resource that is free. And we mentioned a number of times, he did his entire career. We kinda liked it, had him participating and just looking, not contributing, but telling us if there's any fundamental flaw of what we're doing.
Yes, there will definitely be that opportunity, but as of right now, it's setting up the boundaries, setting up.
That's what makes it good.
And he's more than welcome to come to Orlando office and sit down with our guys and go over the model, but.
And we're doing it all in Orlando?
That's, I mean, these are, this model is a very specialized model that there, I don't know if there's anybody in South.
I just kept hearing he would be invited, he hasn't. And that's why I'm bringing it up. We don't wanna do it when it's done, you can't influence the study.
No, this is, everything that's been set up has been set up following all of the permits that are available, information from, you know, from us, from staff. So it's, it's boundary conditions at this point. Once we get into the calibration and doing that, there'll definitely be a need to be.
Be within the boundaries, you might be prepared to go.
Mr. Banks, you have.
I have one other question, excuse me, one last one. Item 1706, Pelican Reserve Stormwater Database, I'm not aware of anything being opened there. Am I wrong?
I believe there's still information there that Stephen is, he's not, he's, to close those items out. There's nothing he's waiting on from you guys.
It says developer. We got all the as well, as far as I know.
Yeah, I understand there's still information that Stephen's waiting for.
Okay.
Okay, just something very simple. On this, on this task authorization update, can we put a target completion date? Something that we can at least understand when we're looking to close these, and that might be a moving target, but.
Yeah, I'll add in, and I know we've, we've talked about that before, Chris brought it up, and I've tried to use the action date. So I think what I'll do is I'll put an authorization, next day authorization date, I'll put a.
Just target.
Attempted completion date.
I understand it's a target, but it'll, it'll help us kind of look at duration and, and it would just be helpful.
Absolutely.
The next meeting, will you have, getting to, Chris, the estimated cost for the facility planning for the water sewer and reuse water CIP projects, facility planning?
If, if, if we would like that for the next meeting, I certainly can. Is it, you know, to be clear, do we want it based on what CIP analysis that we did on those items?
Well, we talked about it at the last couple of meetings. It's a five-year deal. It would be ridiculous and a waste of money to not do everything on that five-year plan with one facility plan.
I agree, I just wanna make sure.
Yeah, so I'd like to see that at the next meeting. The other one is, is that Chris had it out here a while ago, and I had seen it, because Tony sent it to me. Are you looking at these documents, the planned review of the school site, and more specifically, the review of their surface water management report? It's detailed, to say the least.
With what?
Their surface water management, very detailed, but it impacts royally the Hampton Park deal.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a task to do that. I don't know if we've received those or not.
It just came in today.
So the answer is not yet?
I haven't sent for you, though.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yes, we'll be reviewing those tomorrow.
Looking at those documents.
Would you say it didn't pass Hampton Park? Could you be just a note for each of you listening?
The flow from the school side will flow directly via pipe into the Hampton Park system.
100%.
Direct piping in from the school site into Hampton Park. So that's something that has been part of the plan, so it just has to be reviewed, make sure there's no impact on what they're, what they're doing.
What question on this? Maybe not for you, but maybe you know the answer. If you look at those plans, they have a plethora of lakes and interconnecting pipes, headwalls, and God only knows what else inside there. Who's gonna operate, maintain that?
They are, they are operating and maintaining 100% of that on site. And one of the things we've talked about is, because they're doing that, I don't think there's an obligation that we do any of the review, but I think, and we talked about that at a previous meeting. And one of the things we want is for our inspector to actually not just be paying attention to what's going to Gateway, which is essentially what's in the right way, whether it's water, sewer irrigation, or stormwater, but specifically with stormwater, because it is going to have a direct impact on your system, we wanna make sure that what's constructed doesn't have debris in it, doesn't have to bit in your seal. And when it's done, it's a nice clean system.
I'm worried about that also, but I'm more worried about the thomya, the rate of water coming out. What is that control device that they're installing to ensure that these values for 5, 10, 25, and 100 year are not exceeding?
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to review that.
I couldn't find it on the plans.
Okay, we'll look at that. If you recall, when Johnson Engineering came and presented previously, their, their goal, not only during construction, but afterwards, is obviously to maintain or retain as much on site as possible.
Yeah, I would like to see the, because of our experience with Weirs here, I'd love to see their control box that is the last structure, when the last pond, where their flow goes out and comes in, goes across the pipe under Griffin into our Hampton Park system. What, what is that device they're putting in? Because if it's not adjustable, and building a dam, all the water that comes in there, it just goes out, and Hampton Park gets flooded, I wanna know that right now.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll obviously take a look at that, and if they don't provide, if they didn't provide calculations, we'll request those. They generally put them on the plans themselves.
I couldn't find the control structure. I couldn't find it.
Yeah, I haven't, we haven't seen the, we haven't seen the documents yet.
Madam Chair, I may just, on the issue, the District has a concern as to whether or not that stormwater management system on the school side will complement and interoperate and/or the maximum flows will be achieved and not exceeded. One of our other CDs, Pelican Marsh and Naples, I don't know if you're familiar with the Mercado project. Mercado is actually outside the boundaries of the Pelican Marsh CDD, but the historic discharges are from Pelican Marsh into, excuse me, are from Mercado into Pelican Marsh. And Pelican Marsh CDD and the developer of Mercado entered into an agreement where the Pelican Marsh CDD maintains some of the stormwater management system within Mercado for a fee, there's a fee that's paid to Pelican Marsh CDD. And that way, Pelican Marsh CDD has greater assurances as to the stormwater quality. I don't know if the board's interested in talking to the school board about that or not. But that's just, it's been done before in those situations, and it's been a very beneficial relationship.
We'll see what Danny has to.
We're staff to do that.
Quantity, maybe, quality, no.
Okay.
I wouldn't wanna touch the qualitative of school parking lots and anything else that's on the school site.
Any other questions for our engineer?
No.
Thank you, Danny.
All right, I think Tony has one item on here that I'll save, but if you don't leave me out for anything else, my, I'm planning on folding.
Okay. Which one is it we'll have Tony give?
I think he was gonna do drainage.
I'm free.
You can, you can, you don't have to pull that up for my sake. I just let you know, if you don't see me here, that's why.
Okay. District Council?
Yes. A couple items. One is a memorandum on a project test, I don't know if there's any questions on any of the items on there. Items 4C2I and ID, they're actually one and the same. They got both separated. And this is with regards to accepting the quick claim deed for the Broadway track in Town Lakes Office Park. And I ordered an updated title report to ensure there are no further encumbrances affecting that property. And it's ready to be, the original deed's been signed and being held in escrow, ready for us to accept it. And the board wishes to, the board could order inspection of the property, test its condition, or just accept it as is. And I think that's been the center of the board, that that is an option. And so the request is to, for the board action is to, I've ordered updated property information report, accept the quick claim deed upon receipt of the updated property information report, showing no change in status, and they'll wrap up Town Lakes.
Town Lakes has no street lighting, is that correct? The only thing that we're accepting in the right of ways, the pavement.
There'll be any landscaping and.
Laying lanes, paving lanes.
It might be, I believe, or might be, I believe, or some easements in favor of the association might be for signage, might be so that would be, for the District wants to maintain the signage or not.
How are we handling the signage on any other light deal?
We haven't got the other deal yet.
Are there any others for which we have the signage?
I don't know, but it'd be up for Fairway Lakes and/or Commerce, I mean, that section by the end of Preservate, any signage that's there. It's called streetlights and utilities and landscaping. So the action by the board would be to accept the quick claim deed after an updated property information report and who's having to change the status.
And who's doing that?
I order that.
You order that?
The updated property information report.
Okay. That, that's not, has somebody done a physical inventory of the pavement itself just to verify that everything's in good condition?
Yeah, not too bad.
Well, let's get into what we're going to do then. We, we, we get it, we take it, which I believe we should be doing. Right now, Town Lakes is one of the few that I don't know how that mess got created, but they're being built.
Or they're being specially assessed.
They're being specially assessed.
Yes.
Nobody else is.
Right.
We had WCI to fall back on before the acceptance of those six or seven.
Yes.
And they were all brought up to speed. That was with road standards, proper signs, everything. I think we need to know what exposure do we have on Town Lakes as far as either the pavement and/or signage, because I think those are the only two things that we would have any issue, street signage, of an expense that we're going to have to incur to bring those things up to speed before we accept it. Otherwise, I have no problem with accepting it.
I have to agree with you. Before we accept it, it could claim, we need to make sure that there is any repair work that WCI should perform.
Or, or in this instance, one of the approach might be, again, to have, you know, the staff and engineer ascertain whether, whether there's compliance with required signage, the roadway condition. And again, the, the District has been collecting an additional amount from these property owners as a special assessment for maintenance activities in the past.
This one's a little different.
Right. And, and to the extent that there might be additional monies owed, or additional monies required, if WCI doesn't step up to it and take care of that, then there could be additional special assessments on these properties.
Can we do this while we're doing that, since we know that we got two to follow? If we're just gonna have somebody go out and do that, let's just do them all. Do Fairway Lakes, this one, and.
Town Lakes, not Town Lakes, Fairway Lakes and Commerce.
Worthington.
And Worthington.
Just do them all, get it over with, and we'll know what exposure we have.
And is it, or is it our position that we would kind of true up? And is it, or is it our position that we would kinda true-up these properties in line with, with what we're doing with the special assessment?
My, my thing is, is that we got such a mess. West Lakes, they don't pay anything. So why should these others?
Well, that's my point, is.
My deal is, is that I don't think any of these should be paying, a, a payment to us for a special assessment. Once they turn them over to us and they're in a condition to accept and then start.
And they all pay or none of them pay? I mean, and it's.
That's my point. All pay or none pay.
So we see fair which side of the fence we're gonna jump on.
And we've already set the, the policy that they don't pay by West Lakes. When we took West Lakes, we aren't building them. Nobody down there's paying any assessment.
But that doesn't mean we can't create them.
That's fair. But, no, it doesn't mean you can't, but.
When it's for the special benefit.
But here's the problem you got. You're, we, we accepted six or seven of these, and none of them are accepted with a special assessment. We're either gonna go back and re-nig on all of those, or we're going to take, and the next three that come in, they get the same deal as everybody else. You bring it to us in a condition that it's usable and complete, and, or the, the play feels level.
I don't see it as re-nigging. Like, in this, for the office park, that's for their special benefit, the office park. That doesn't benefit.
Benefits me? I go over there all the time. Benefits.
We'll add you to the special.
It benefits all the residents of Gateway. Same thing, well, same way going back to Pinewood or Pinecrest, going past the church, same thing going past the bank.
Well, I go to Seven Eleven three times a week, but I don't, I don't help them pay their electricity bill.
Right.
My, my point is, is that we can do it, but we're gonna go back and tell Pinecrest and the church, and Devonshire and Waterford Village, and good God, how many of them are there?
Yeah, well, the.
That they're all going to have to pay now.
I think, I think the point is, we just need to have that conversation on whether we wanna do it or not, and what's, what's justifiable in our position.
Two years ago, I thought we did. When the issue of transferring those seven, the key deal we discussed at that meeting, as a recall, was that WCI, or the owner of that, which was WCI, you have to bring it to us in an updated condition, and we'll take it over. There was no, I don't even remember one discussion of, well, after we get it, we're gonna go back and special assess all the.
And we, we might not pay that, that's good. I don't, I don't remember.
No.
And that might be the difference, because the board may, in this instance, still decide to go ahead and take the deed, but to the extent that there are improvements that are needed, make those and then impose a special assessment.
That, that.
Which is the difference.
That could be the difference. I could agree with that.
I'm just, I'm just looking at, you know, ongoing maintenance, something we may not have considered, you know, in the past, but it's just, it's something we have to have a discussion about.
But I think right now, we need the facts, so if we can have somebody do those three while they're out there, then we can have the discussion of what we wanna do.
Yeah.
Because I can see WCI right now, just coming up and saying.
No.